Good morning, everyone.
Everyone, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order. Entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to adjust the board agenda items only. No one? Okay, thank you. Proclamation presentation, 230328. Chris?
Okay. Whereas today we celebrate the outstanding success and achievements of the Scranton Prepory School Classics Tennis Team, the 2023 Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association Class 2A State Girls Tennis Team Champions. These young women have proudly succeeded with great accomplishments as student athletes and members of the Scranton Prep community. And whereas the Classic captured the Lackawanna League title with a 14-0 record and won the District 2 Class A, Class 2A crown with a victory over Wyoming Seminary. They then defeated District 11 Champion Moravian Academy, District 7 Runner-Up Whitley Academy, and District 10 Champion Erie Cathedral Prep in a PIAA state playoff before dispatching District 1 Champion Lower Moreland 3-1 in the state title match at the Hershey Racket Club. And whereas the 2023 Scranton Prep Girls Tennis Team includes Macy Balzoni, Ela Cohen, Emma Cuck, Grace Divine, Sophie Haas, Nora Kaluki, Nicole Krakovich, Lily Lingle, Hannah LaCo, Valerie Warren, and Alyssa Wigley. And whereas head coach Kendra Croker led the Classics to a 21-1 record and the school's first state champion in her first season. A former accomplished and celebrated tennis player at Scranton Prep, Croker along with the support of the faculty, the student body, and the community helped make 2023 campaign the most memorable season in Classics history. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notteri, Annie Debbie Dominic, Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim December 6 to be Scranton Prep Classics Day in Lackawanna County. Congratulations.[203.12][203.12](APPLAUSE).
Coach?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kendra Croker Bruner, the girls tennis coach and alumni of Scranton Prep. During my time at Prep, I played for the tennis team, and although it was a great experience, this season tops it all. First, I would like to thank the Commissioners, Notteri, Andy, Dominic, Schirmack, and staff for honoring the girls tennis team during this meeting, in addition to the sign it displayed outside the school. The girls have worked extremely hard during the year, not only playing teams in Pennsylvania, but traveling for competition in both New York and New Jersey. This season, they have excelled as one unit, and over the last few months have developed a team dynamic and culture that have won them the state championship. When I began this journey in August, I told the girls that I believed they could be state champions. As the season developed and weeks passed, they also began to believe. What makes our team so special is that everyone is completely diverse, different personalities, different passions, and most importantly, different playing styles. Other teams in the state have players that are similar styles throughout their whole lineup, but what makes our team unique is that every girl has different strengths on the court. Each girl used those talents and strengths throughout the year, bringing them to a competitive level to win the state title. I am very fortunate to be your coach, because everything I have given you, girls, you have implemented on the court, and you have played with determination and fire this season. I am most proud for not only what they have accomplished on the court, but for all their hard work in the classroom and throughout our community. All of the girls have participated in community service to benefit residents in Lackawanna County and beyond. It's these things that make me most proud of the girls. Again, thank you for your support today. I can't wait to continue to see the amazing things that they will accomplish during their time at Prep and thereafter, and hopefully, we will continue to make District 2 and Lackawanna County proud. Thank you.
Thank you.[325.64][325.64](APPLAUSE). All right, if you guys all want to come up, we can get a picture. I have your proclamation for you. Yeah, right. Come on up.
Great job. How are you?
Good.
Rick will tell us where to stand.
Thank you.
Just so we balance, if we have some of the girls over on this side?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you.[395.66][395.66](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations.
Thank you.
See you soon, right?
Yes.
Thank you all. That was, it's wonderful that the girls did such a great job, and the coaches done such an amazing job with the group she has. Resolution 230327.
Approving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's General Fund total numbers 364-845-366001, inclusive totaling $1,662,327.76. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $9,306,340.87. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
I assume everyone's had the opportunity to look at the payables. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230308.
Entering into a personal care service agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into the Personal Care Services Agreement on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging with Med Staffers, 27 Brookwood Avenue, Carlisle, Pennsylvania, 17015 for the fiscal years 23 through 26. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the agency's director, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Good morning.
Morning.
Med Staffers is a home care agency that provides personal care services required to be offered by the area agencies on aging. Services include assistance with activities of daily living such as feeding, skincare, mouth care, ambulation, bathing, hair care, grooming, shaving, dressing, transfer activities, toileting, and assistance with self-administration of medications. Home support activities can be included in personal care services if they are necessary and secondary to the provision of personal care. Services costs range from $21 to $22 an hour for the duration of the contract, with a $29 an hour rate for emergency and holiday staffing.
Thanks, Sarah. You've done a great job down there.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Sarah? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230309.
Approving an agreement for the Office of Drug and Alcohol, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into an agreement on behalf of the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs for the fiscal year 23 through 24 with Clear Vision Health and Wellness LLC. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of the Agency, Ms. Barb Durkin.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm looking for your support for our office, the Drug and Alcohol Office, to enter into a contract with Clear Vision. It is an inpatient and detox drug and alcohol facility that's located in Hazelton, PA. It's a bilingual facility, so that's really helpful. Obviously, we're seeing a larger Spanish-speaking population in Lackawanna County that are in need of treatment services, so this is an ideal facility. It's close by. They provide great treatment. Again, this won't cost the county any additional dollars. It's built into our budget. We're just looking to enter into a new contract with them.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
I don't think there can be any questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, and the question?
Thank you very much.
All in favor? Aye, thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Resolution 230310.
Approving a provider agreement for the Office of Youth and Family Services, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a provider agreement with the Jewish Family Service of the Greater Harrisburg, Pennsylvania for the Office of Youth and Family Services for the fiscal year 23 through 24. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Executive Director of OAFS, Mr. Bill Browning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We're requesting a contract with the Jewish Family Service of Greater Harrisburg to provide out-of-home placement services, as we've done in previous Commissioners' meetings, that we try to contract with available placement resources to fill the gap when our own foster homes aren't available.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230311.
Approving a professional service agreement for the Department of Health, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a professional contract on behalf of the Department of Health with tuberculosis physician Dr. Jennifer Joyce to commence January 1, 2024, and expire December 31, 2024. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
Good morning. Dr. Joyce is an infectious disease specialist with a subspecialty in tuberculosis. We need to contract with such a person in order to achieve certification for the Department of Health.
And you're getting pretty close to that certification.
We're getting very close.
Very close?
Yep.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230312.
Entering into a medical office space lease, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a medical office space lease located at 640 Madison Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, in the suite basement on behalf of the Lackawanna County Department of Health and Human Services with the Scranton Hospital Company LLC, Regional Hospital of Scranton, leased to commence December 1, 2023, and expire November 30, 2024, at a cost of $2,032.50 a month for 2,715 usable square feet. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
So this lease, backtrack, because of internal corporate reasons, the parent company in Moses Taylor had to terminate the original lease, which was for a space that was connected, physically connected to the hospital. This lease is for an office that used to be the Maternal Family Health Center before they moved to South Washington Avenue, and so they're providing us that space at the same cost, and actually, it's a better space with parking, so it works.
And this is necessary to continue to?
This is absolutely necessary to apply.
And it's reimbursed by the state?
Right, with the county share, but again, it's, at this point, there is no county share. It's all from the retained earnings that we had allocated for the Department of Health.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Resolution 230313.
Awarding the Health and Benefits Consultant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby award the Health and Benefits Consultant to Universal Employee Benefits, 1,000 Dunn Drive, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, 18512. It's a three-year agreement to commence on January 1, 2024, with the cost of one year of service to be $67,200. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Human Resources Director, Ms. Joanne Decker.
Good morning. We're requesting the award to Universal Employee Benefits. As the Chief of Staff said, it's a three-year agreement to begin on January 1, 2024.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Joanne? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
All in question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230314.
Entering into a tower lease agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a tower lease agreement with Covington Township to allow the county to install, maintain, and operate emergency services, communication equipment, Wi-Fi data equipment, antennas, and other necessary equipment to facilitate emergency communications and Wi-Fi access in the North Pocono region of Lackawanna County. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Solicitor, Mr. Donald Frederiksen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lackawanna County 911, our emergency services and our Wi-Fi up there, equipment is located in an old windmill on the Covington Township property. It's been there for many, many years. The windmill is in dire need of repairs. This lease agreement, under the agreement, we don't pay them any money, but we agree to maintain the tower, the windmill going forward, and allowing us to keep our equipment into service EMS services up in North Pocono in the Moscow area.
Anyone have any questions for Don? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230315.
Approving the Pima Grant Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the 911 statewide interconnectivity funding grant agreement in the amount of $541,541.89 for the Lackawanna ILEC Post Migration Legacy, NECOR INS Maintenance, GIS readiness pre-migration, Lackawanna NG911 PSAP Conformance, and Monroe Lackawanna Share Recorder Projects. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here is our 911 Director to answer any of your questions, Mr. Al Carney.
Good morning. This is grant money that we applied for from the state. It comes out of the 15% money, so it won't come out of the operating costs that we receive in our 83% money. All these services that we'll provide in here are necessary and no cost to the taxpayer.
Anyone have any questions for Al? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230316.
Entering into an equipment maintenance agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an equipment maintenance agreement with Two Way Mobile Communications Incorporated on behalf of Emergency Services for one-year term to begin January 1, 2024, and to cost $222,095.67. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here once again is Director Carney.
Two Way has been the provider of maintenance for EZNet and our phone system. They handle not only us, but all the other counties that share the phone system, so this comes out of the grant that we just accepted, all the costs, so it's, again, no cost to us out of the 83%.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And resolution 230317.
Entering into an amendment with Tyler Technology, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an amendment with Tyler Technologies Incorporated on behalf of the Lackawanna County Department of Emergency Services, 911, for maintenance and support for the Tyler licensed software. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Carney.
Tyler has been our CAD vendor for many, many years. They gave, you know, we pay this annually, and we asked if we, you know, did this in a five-year block, if we can get any savings, so they agreed to lower our maintenance costs over the course of five years by $136,000. So entering into this agreement would save the county $136,000 over five years.
Good job, Al. All right, anyone have any questions for Al? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230318.
Entering into a license agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a license agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center, 420 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, on behalf of the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau for the March 2024 judicial tax sale. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here is the Director of the Tax Claim Bureau, Ms. Barb Wannity.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The Tax Claim Bureau will be conducting the 2024 judicial sale on Monday, March 25, at 10 o'clock. This is an agreement for rental of Chaplain Hall at the Scranton Cultural Center at the cost of $540. Tax sales were always conducted indoors before COVID-19 pandemic. The pandemic forced the Tax Claim Bureau to conduct their sales outdoors at Montage Pavilion. These sales are conducted in March and September, and weather conditions are unpredictable during these times. It seems more appropriate to conduct these sales indoors and closer to the government center.
Agreed.
It's, how much is this contract for?
It's $540.
And how much do we give the cultural center every year?
That I don't know.
It's actually kind of amazing to me, but anyhow, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Barb.
You'll be warm and dry this time.
Yeah. Resolution 230319.
Entering into an agreement with Lumen Technologies, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Centennial Communications LLC, Lumen Technologies Group for 36 months at a cost of $3,508 per month. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Chief Financial Officer of Lackawanna County, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Good morning, Commissioners. This agreement with Lumen is another in a line of those that we were remitting that had either expired or not board-approved. This one falls into the latter category. The county service relationship with Lumen and its predecessor companies dates back to 2011. I was not able to locate the board approval for the original agreement or even subsequent renewals. The company provides dedicated internet access services to both the government center and the emergency services center. The total cost of the contract is $42,096, and that doesn't include a one-time charge of $2,000, and Lumen is a CoStarz vendor.
Anyone have any questions for Dave? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution 230320.
Entering performance-based energy savings agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a performance-based energy savings agreement with McClure Company for energy conservation measures at the following locations: Lackawanna County Government Center, the Lackawanna County Courthouse, Emergency Services 911 Building, the County Prison, Criminal Justice Building, and the Lackawanna County Children's Library and the Gateway Building. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is the CFO, Mr. Bolzoni.
This contract results from the initial request for proposal process that was requested by the board in 2021. We had engaged in 2023, earlier in 2023, with McClure, and the energy savings project has resulted, or at least the request for proposal and the process of negotiation, has resulted in this contract. There are several pages within the contract to note, and I think I may have mentioned this in the work session, just to elaborate a little bit. The project includes all of the county facilities, including the government center, the courthouse, the 911 building, the prison, criminal justice building, the children's library, and the gateway building. Schedule D within the contract identifies the anticipated savings, so between energy savings and capital avoidance, the total amount of savings generated from the project would be approximately $14.9 million. Within the contract, it does identify the estimated values of the improvements specifically, but importantly, it also identifies why the project is being undertaken. There are several components of it that I think are worth noting to the board. Relative to the government center, much of the existing HVAC equipment dates back to 1997. Same with the electrical step-down transformers. The existing window system requires replacement. The existing roofing system in the government center is in poor condition. The plumbing system requires improvement to maintain operations. The current sprinkler and fire system requires an upgrade to meet code. There are also some other components that certainly you can review within the contract. Some of the other work, based on useful life of existing equipment, so for example, with the children's library, the heating system is ancient. It requires replacement. Some upgrades within some of the existing facilities are also based on useful life issues as well, so I thought I'd point those out because I think they're important for the board to recognize.
A lot of this is cleaning up previous situations.
A lot of it is work that is required within this building. When it could have been undertaken, now I'll leave that open for discussion, but certainly this, the number of components of the project relative to this building are fairly significant.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Dave?
Santa Claus can help us.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe he could take this building back. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Dave. Resolution 230321.
Awarding the video storage equipment, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby award the video storage equipment for the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office to CWDW at a cost of $425,757.13. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the District Attorney's Director of Program Management, Ms. Karina Havenside.
I'd like to thank Joe Wexler, Mike Brown, and Dave Bolzoni for their assistance with designing and getting the approval in the bid process for this purchase, but it is, it was bid out in compliance with all of our county guidelines, and this is to approve awarding CDW with the contract for the proposed video storage system, which is 100% grant-funded.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230322.
Approving the Support Services Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve and ratify the Support Services Agreement with Northern Tier Research, 1302 Madison Avenue, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, for the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office for Toxicology, Toxicology Testing Laboratory Services associated with the department's testing requirements, term to commence January 1, 2024, and expire December 31, 2024. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the District Attorney's Administrative Officer, Mr. Brian Fennery.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of Mark Powell, we ask, or I ask, that you approve and ratify a Support Services Agreement with Northern Tier Research for the District Attorney's Office for Toxicology Testing Laboratory Services associated with the department's testing requirements, and as Mr. Jeffers said, it'll be a one-year contract for calendar year 2024.
Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Question?
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 230.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Resolution 230323.
Entering into a managed print services agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a managed print services agreement with Top Business Solutions for 60 months at a cost of $30,421.2. Adopted a regular meaning, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Purchasing, Mr. Joseph Wexler.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This new five-year contract will result in, over the period, $288,000 savings for the county. It's a program that will be under constant review to find efficiencies in eliminating Basically, it continues what we've been doing for a long time with Top Copy. Cop Topi is a CoStarz vendor.
Anyone have any questions for Joe? Anyone have any questions for Joe? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
Resolution 230324.
Warring the prison inmate and welfare audit, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the prison inmate and welfare annual audits after receiving the recommendation of the Lackawanna County Prison Board for the year ended December 31st, 2022, to Kohansky Company, PC, at a fee of $9,000. Adopted or regulated meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the Controller of Lackawanna County, Mr. Gary DiBilio.
Thank you, Chief Jeffers. Good morning, Commissioners. Our prison board advertised a request for qualifications for an audit of the prison inmate account and prison welfare account. The proposal selected by the board based on the criteria used was from Kohansky and Company from Musick, Pennsylvania, at a cost of $4,500 for each of the two accounts.
Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 230325.
Entering into a contract extension, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a one-year contract extension with WellPath for inmate health care services effective January 15, 2024, through January 14, 2025, and to include the medical medication assisted treatment program. Adopted or regulated meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, this has been spoken about by the prison board also. It's a one-year contract extension with the current provider out in prison, with the new Board of Commissioners and the new prison board coming in. They can seek requests for proposals in the future.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230326.
Thank you, Gary. This authorization of application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorize the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Municipal Assistance Program on behalf of the Borough of Moscow and the Townships of Covington, Elmhurst, Jefferson, Madison, Roaringbrook, Springbrook, and Thornhurst, collectively known as the North Pocono Planning Association, as they will be undertaking a project to develop the multi-municipal comprehensive plan and implement said plan through zoning ordinances updates. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby commit municipal resources in the amount of $25,000 as match for said project. Adopted or regular meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Planning Manager, Ms. Mary Liz Donato.
Good morning, Commissioners.
How are you?
This is a resolution to authorize the planning office to apply for a assistance grant from DCED in the amount of $75,000 for this regional planning initiative. The county is providing $25,000 as a local match. The eight municipalities will be providing $50,000 divided amongst, but by a formula on population and square miles. I just want to point out that this will be our third regional planning group within the county, and we will have 22 municipalities involved in regional planning, which is more than half, so this is a great thing.
It's a big step, and you're doing a great job, Mary.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mary Liz? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Hello, I'm Denise Snars. I was here a month ago. I'm back, because I won't go away. Actually, last month when I came, I didn't have anything formally written. This month I did, because I wasn't contacted by the Commissioners. So I'm going to start my situation regardless, the Lackawanna County Housing Authority. So the Lackawanna County Housing Authority has been ignoring, dismissing, and not taking seriously the tenants' complaints and concerns with our living conditions. They ignore blatant health and safety issues within and outside the units. They ignore our complaints about how the housing authority personnel treats tenants. Tenants should not be threatened and intimidated in our own homes. No one listens to us. No one takes responsibility or accountability. No one, sorry. No one listens to us. No one takes responsibility or accountability for the things happening at our site. Everybody knows from the top down and everybody in between. Nothing gets done and nothing changes. No one cares about us. I personally complained about the mistreatment by my property manager, Ms. Thiel, to her supervisor, Mr. Jackson, and my complaints were dismissed. The legitimate concerns that I raised about my living conditions and about how I've been treated have been met with threats, intimidation, and bullying by the housing authority personnel, specifically the contractor hired by the housing authority, Mr. Dieselak, and the property manager, Ms. Thiel, to the point where I was evicted because of my complaints. I was threatened I would be removed, that I would be gone. I abated rent because the housing authority did not acknowledge the numerous health and safety issues with inside and outside my unit. I illegally abated rent, but I was evicted because of it. I am the one who has suffered because of their inaction, their unaccountability, and blatant denial that a problem even exists, and their negligence has made the situation worse. I was told if it's that bad, why would I stay? Why would I stay in a unit that has, where was I supposed to go? Where was I supposed to go? And then I come down here every month, every month, for a year and a half now, to stay my eviction so I can appeal my eviction, and I kept coming here every month to appeal my eviction, to an apartment I can't even reside in, an apartment that I can't sleep in because the mold, the conditions got so bad. They wanted me gone. They wanted me to shut up. They wanted to quiet me, to go back to my house, mind my own business. They didn't get that, did they? Because I'm standing here, and I will continue to raise my voice. I will continue to tell whoever will listen to me. I stood here a month ago. I spoke to you, somebody was going to call me. Nobody called me. I will continue. I'm not the only one, and trust me, we will be back. I will be back. Other people will be back, and at some point, I will have other neighbors write letters. I have neighbors that can't even physically leave their houses, that have had issues with housing, but they can't. I've had tenants, so many tenants, in the last two years since Ms. Thiel, I didn't name her name last month because I didn't want to get more intimidation, threats, bullying, whatever, in the last two years. I have not seen so many tenants leave housing, either evicted, forced out, or they just get so fed up they leave because of our mistreatment. I was, literally, I was told if you don't like it, just leave. It's not right. I told you this a month ago. It's not right how, you know, they're violating our due process. We're not even give grievance hearings when we ask for it. They're not giving us our due process. They're not even following the HUD regulations. When I was here a month ago, you're like, it's HUD-funded housing. Correct, but they're not even following their own HUD regulations. You know, I, I have contacted HUD, and finally, I'm finally maybe making headway with HUD, and maybe HUD will actually come in and investigate what's going on, because apparently the county knows about this and doesn't even want to do anything about it, because they know about it, and you guys know about it, and nobody still wants to do anything about what's going on up there. You know, you know, I, I would just like to read you a letter. You know, this was from Mr. Jackson. I've received and reviewed, I sent them a letter, two years, I've been living a nightmare for two years. I sent them a four-page letter about my concerns with my living environment, and I, and this is where I said, they didn't give me my grievance hearing. I received and reviewed a copy of your letters from Ms. Thiel with your concerns of the work being done at the site. Please allow me to state that any work being done at the site has been authorized and approved by the housing authority, engineering staff, executive management, with support from the Board of Commissioners. Though you may feel that your concerns are legitimate, the housing authority has followed its process in requesting and attaining a qualified contractor to pour in the work. The same qualified contractor that left nails and debris, garbage laying around the units that I personally had to pick up, I didn't bring the evidence with me this week, but maybe I will the next time. In addition, the issues that you feel are concerns will no longer be addressed by the executive management, which will include no further meetings or grievances on this matter. Therefore, you feel that you must take some form of legal action. Please have your attorney contact the housing authority attorney to address any matters. Sincerely, Mr. Jackson. This is just some of, this was in 2021. So in 2021, December till now, I was forced out of my home, ignored threats, evicted because I raised, they fabricated a lie and wanted me gone. Simple as that, because I raised legitimate cares and concerns about my living environment. I mean, I have photos, the mold. See the mold? See that mold? I had this mold tested. I paid $555 out of my own pocket. They said I alleged mold. I'm done, you know? I don't know what I have to do to be acknowledged. I don't know what we have to do to finally have something done up there, or even have the personnel looked into, because when we complain about our mistreatment by just the personnel in general, I mean, they're hiding behind their lawyers. They're hiding behind the lawyers, because that's what they do. I don't know anymore, because they can hide behind their lawyers, because that's what they can do. I had a neighbor, that her condition of her apartment got so bad, and she had children, I don't have children, she had children in her home, and she had to leave because it got so bad. She went and stayed with her mom. She didn't even get a chance to get her belongings out of her house. They locked her out. They legally locked her out because they said she abandoned the apartment. It's crazy what they're doing, but you know what? Maybe somebody eventually will hear me. I'm done. Thank you.
You will take that up with the housing authority?
Yeah, they probably already asked them, and they already gave you a version.
Okay.
They gave you their version.
Anyone else have any? Okay, Commissioners? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.[1789.86]